Rosset.
Torres.
President.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Present.
Candellas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Present.
Kamai.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. All right, now if you're able, please join me and stand in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right, today's invocation will be given by Pastor Craig Sellness and Councilmember Batra will tell us more.
Good afternoon. For this council, for my first invocation, I have invited Pastor Craig Sellness, who has lived in my district for last twenty, thirty-six years, nineteen eighty-seven. Pastor Craig Sellness earned his theological degree from Bethel Seminary in St. Paul in nineteen seventy-nine. He later earned a counseling degree from Santa Clara University, and in nineteen eighty-five, he completed his J.D. from University of California, Berkeley. From nineteen eighty-five to two thousand and one, Craig worked as an employment lawyer in San Jose and Palo Alto. Pastor Craig Sellness founded and pastored Cornerstone Community Church, which was located in former Century Almiron Theaters on Blossom Hill Road from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand and sixteen, a total of twenty-three years. Cornerstone merged with Menlo Church San Jose in two thousand and sixteen. Craig served as an associate pastor at Menlo from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one, when he retired. In addition to offering Sunday worship services and weekly Bible studies, Cornerstone prioritized serving the culturally diverse Hoffmann-Villa Monte community through ESL classes, city teams' food distribution, and hosting Spanish and Korean-speaking congregations. Members of the San Jose Police and City Council have periodically used the church as a space for community meetings. His serving the diverse communities, especially in Villa Hoffmonte, made him the most eligible pastor-to-be in giving us the invocation in from District Ten. Craig?
Thank you, Councilman Batra. I grew up in Minnesota, the frozen tundra, but I knew when I was five years old that I wanted to move to California. I can remember the day I was watching the Rose Bowl with my father. I was five years old, back in nineteen sixty, and I was fascinated by what I saw on TV. There was palm trees, and it was seventy-five degrees and sunny, and I looked outside, and it was ten below and snow as far as I could see. And I asked my father, where is this place that we were seeing on TV? He said, it was California. And I told him, that's where I'm going to live. And so when I was twenty-three years old, I moved out to California. I was a pastor for a time in a church in Willow Glen area, went to law school and worked in downtown San Jose. And then we started a church in the District Ten area, as Councilman Batra mentioned. And I have always loved San Jose, ever since I moved here, back in nineteen seventy-nine. More importantly, God loves San Jose. One of the things that we often told our church members, the different churches I've been in, is this, you maybe have heard this before, that God loves you just the way you are, but He loves you too much to leave you that way. There's nothing that we need to do in order to earn God's love. We don't need to do something special, we don't need to talk a certain way, we don't need to be from a certain area. God loves us just the way we are, but He loves us too much to leave us that way. It's not that He wants to change our culture, but He wants to change our character. He wants to make us more loving, more filled with joy, more gracious, and more accepting. And what I appreciate about all those who serve on our city council, and our mayor, and all those who serve in government, is that's why they're doing what they do, because they love San Jose the same way God loves San Jose. They love San Jose just the way it is, but they love it too much to leave it that way. I know they disagree maybe on how to make it better, but that's why they're here, and that's why they're serving us as citizens of San Jose, because they love San Jose just the way it is, and too much to leave it that way. So I'd like to pray for our leaders in our city council, our mayor, that God would give them grace and strength to be able to do just that. So would you bow with me in a moment of prayer? Father, I thank you for this place that we call home, this city that we love. We thank you for the many who have gone before us, who for the last two hundred and forty-six years have worked so hard here to start businesses, to build schools, to build churches, those who have put their lives on the line to keep us safe, who have worked so diligently so we can enjoy clean water, eat healthy food, drive unpaved streets. And now, Lord, we pray for those who are leading us into the future, for our mayor and our city council, and for all those members of government who serve this city. We pray, God, that you would give them the wisdom to discern not just what is good, but what is best, that you'd give them the clarity of vision to see the possibilities beyond our problems. That you continue to give them tender hearts that are sensitive to the hurting, to those who are in pain and struggle. And, God, that you give them the strength of character to live up to their ideals and their values. We thank you for loving each one of us, Father, just the way we are, but too much to leave us this way. And so we ask that you would help us to grow in our love for each other, to learn how to value and to serve and treasure those who speak a different language from ours, who come from different worlds. Help us to grow in grace, and in patience, and gratitude. And finally, we ask, God, that you would give us, that in your grace you would bless our city with all the resources that we need to provide everyone who calls San Jose home with everything we need to live lives filled with peace and with joy. And use our city, Lord, as a force for good in our state and our world, as a beacon of light and hope to all those around us. We pray this in your name, God. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate your prayer for our city. We are on to ceremonial items, Councilmember Candellas and Councilmember Batra. If you'd join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim Diwali.
All right, hello, everybody. Namaste and Happy Diwali. Diwali is one of, is on November twelfth this year, and it is the Festival of Lights, good over evil, and the idea of celebrating positive energy. It is observed by over one billion people worldwide, and one of the most prominent Hindu festivals. During this time, people celebrate by lighting up dhas, or small lamps, placing them around the home to welcome wealth, peace, and universal well-being. We are proud to have residents from all corners of the globe, each bringing their unique heritage, traditions, and experience to our city. This diversity is one of our greatest strengths, and is worth celebrating every day. Just as the lamps of Diwali dispel darkness and bring warmth to our homes, the diversity in our community enriches our lives and brings us together as one San Jose family. It is a reminder that we are all connected, and that our differences make us stronger, more vibrant, and resilient. In the true spirit of Diwali, let us keep the lamps of unity, tolerance, and love, and let them illuminate the path to a brighter, more inclusive future for our city. I want to thank Vinod, Deepak, and Dr. Ramesh Jha Pra and the Balaji Temple of San Jose for being great advocates for our Hindu-American community and residents of San Jose. Thank you, and Happy Diwali to each and every one of you. I'd like to now ask Councilmember Batra to share a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay. The festival named Diwali is derived from Sanskrit word, deepavali, which means the row of lights. And those days, the lights were the clay, little dhas, which some of them have an example of, but they are now battery-operated. That time, they were vegetable oil with a little lamp in them. Diwali is celebrated in diverse India, and I call it diverse India because of the number of states and the number of languages spoken. If you're in north, you could go to the south, and you wouldn't understand a word of that if the local languages were spoken. So there's diversity in India right from the beginning. But now, this festival is celebrated by the Hindus, by the Sikhs, by the Jains, by the Buddhists, and all over the world, including, our White House celebrates it every year. Now, what does it signify? It signifies spiritually the victory of light over darkness, God, good over evil, knowledge over ignorance. In addition to distributing sweets, celebrating with fireworks and other things, nowadays, it is pretty common for us to be exchanging Diwali messages, Happy Diwali, and sometimes we write a little longer than Happy Diwali. In two thousand and nine, I received one such message, which I open every year, because it touches my heart. And I want to read that message to you, because I'm wishing you all the things which are wished in this message to everybody who is attending this session here, on the Zoom, and everywhere in the world, that this is a message which will resonate with you. May the lamps of love and devotion burn brightly in your hearts. May the light of understanding shine in your minds. May the light of harmony glow in your home. May the bright rays of service shine forth ceaselessly from your hands. May your smile, your words, and your actions be as sweet as the sweets of this festival season. May the divine bring you the true wealth of peace, health, happiness, love, and pride of one community, which is what the whole world is made of. Happy Diwali to you, and hopefully you will remember this message and enjoy it every year like I do. I invite Dr. Jha Pra to say a few words on Diwali. Dr. Jha Pra is one of the community leaders who is trying to promote this kind of a message, which I just read you.
Happy Diwali to all of you. Honorable Councilmember Gabriel Candellas, and of course, our own Arjun Batraji, and Honorable Mayor Mahan, Matt Mahan, and all the honorable council members behind me, all the citizens and residents of San Jose. We, on behalf of Hindu and Indian-Americans of San Jose, as a matter of fact, the Bay Area, express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for recognizing us. I think you already heard the message, what it means. It's become a lot more important, being one of the most significant Hindu festivals, you know, we've been celebrating for the last many, many years, but now, with almost one in five in San Jose residents being Indian and Hindu-Americans, and of course, the Bay Area, and some of Fremont, even thirty-eight to forty-eight percent of us living there, it's become a lot more important, because our second and third-generation children and youngsters who are born here, who are living here, we want to make sure we inculcate our heritage, our philosophy, our culture, our values, our principles to them, and also, at the same time, share with all the other ethnic communities, because what you heard from the values, they are so, so important to everybody. As a matter of fact, the Hindu values are almost aligned with the constitutional values, whether it's a family value, peace, or truthfulness, innovation, collaboration, you just name it. We are all together, and we want to work together. And thank you one more time, we really, really appreciate being part of us, making us part of your family, part of your community, and making us feel at home. Thank you, and we are very, very inclusive to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jha Pra. Okay, so I think we're gonna have a little bit of the lighting, right? Okay.
All right.
Awesome, yeah. Awesome. And now, as we wrap this up, I think we're gonna be having Parvi Shaw and Artham Patel to perform a short Katak dance piece. So come on up to the front, and then we can, and then I'll, and then we will invite my colleagues to share a quick picture. A thirty-second prayer? Yeah, yeah. Okay, so prayer, then dance.
Om Gananaantva Gnapatigam Havamahen Kavinkavi Namupam Assarvastamam Jeshtarajam Brahmanaam Brahmanaspataha Nasshunvano Tivissidasaadanam Shreemam Mahagnapatey Namaha Om Asatoma Sadghamaya Tamasoma Jotirghamaya Mrityoroma Amritanghamaya Om Shanti 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 Loka Samastasikno Bhantu Loka Samastasikno Bhantu Loka Samastasikno Bhantu Vishwapi Diwali, and Mayor, and all the staffs, and all of you, and the meaning will be, or Mangalaji going to recite, Asatoma Sadghamaya meaning, she will going to translate. And Vishw again, Happy Diwali.
Namaste, everyone. Happy Diwali. And just a translation of the prayer that Swamiji just sang. It says, "Lead me from the unreal to the real. Lead me from darkness to light. Lead me from death to immortality. May there be peace all over the world." Happy Diwali. Thank you.
Happy to be here to support, please.
Everybody, one, two, three. There we go.
One, two, and three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Happy Diwali, everyone. Councilmember Ortiz, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim Native American Heritage Month.
Honored to be joined by the Indian Health Center. Kalpulitoneleke, Adam, please come down, if you'd like to stand with us. And of course, Vice President of the Alam Rock School District, Corina Herrera Oera. Thank you all for being here. Hello, everybody. I want to start my comments by inviting any of my colleagues who would like to join us and stand in solidarity with our Native American community to please come down. November is Native American Heritage Month, a time to platform the history and culture, as well as honor the many contributions of the indigenous nations of the United States. For San Jose, it should also serve as a time to properly examine our intertwined history with both the people whose ancestral lands San Jose is built on and our local indigenous community, claiming heritage to many nations. San Jose sits on the traditional territory of speakers of the Tamian language, part of a broader regional community of Alone peoples, whose descendants are now members of multiple reorganized tribes and groups. Particularly, this city is within the ancestral lands of the Muakma Alone people, who trace their ancestral lineages through the Mission Dolores, Santa Clara, and San Jose. The city is also home to a sizable urban indigenous community, representing over one hundred and eighty tribes from around the country. San Jose's history with both indigenous populations is deeply intertwined. Historically, San Jose was one of seven destination cities designated in the Indian Relocation Act of nineteen fifty-six, a destabilizing program to bring indigenous people from across the country to cities to push assimilation. While damaging, this plan ultimately brought together indigenous people from many walks of life who created community, ultimately laying the foundation for strong self-determination in a movement here in the Bay Area in the nineteen sixties, a hotbed of organizing for gains on the national level, such as the Indian Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty-eight. And a lasting legacy of that era of activism is the Indian Health Center of Santa Clara Valley, a community health center formed by indigenous activists here in San Jose. Today, the Indian Health Center continues to serve the indigenous community of San Jose, as well as provide highly competent health care to low-income people of all ethnic backgrounds. San Jose is strengthened thanks to their advocacy. I now want to pass the mic to Sonia Tetnowski, a member of the Makah tribe in Washington State, and the Chief Executive Officer of the Indian Health Center of Santa Clara Valley, to say a few words. Please welcome Sonia. Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. Hi, Kuiqula Ayoch, Sesiqula. I'm She Who Walks With The Ancestors, an enrolled member of the Makah tribe from Washington State. I've been here about nine years, serving as the CEO of the Indian Health Center of Santa Clara Valley. In partnership with the city, I feel like we've been able to enhance and grow and provide additional services to our respective communities. This month marks a time in history where we celebrate our traditional cultures, our songs, our dances, our art, the things we, that bring us joy and bring us back to once we were. At this time, I also want to recognize that, as Councilman Ortiz shared, there is a hundred and ten federally recognized tribes in the state of California. There's a hundred and fourteen who are seeking recognition. So in California, there are over seven hundred and fifty thousand American Indians that were either from this community or were brought to California during that relocation time. So it is with great honor that this city is honoring us today to recognize the great work that, and the great contributions that American work and the great contributions that American Indians, Alaska natives, and our indigenous communities have made in contribution to what we see today. It's really an honor to be here, and at this time, we're going to have one of the members of our community share a song with you, and then we can do pictures after.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Klekko, klekko, akshiyukshots.
Good afternoon, relatives.
Thank you. And then we could take a picture.
Now, I would like to ask the mayor to please present the commendation to Sonia. Thank you.
Herardo, Ysteo Loera, I'm Director of Development and Communications for the Indian Health
And then we could take a picture. Thank you for being here, Corina. All right.
Center of Santa Clara Valley.
And on to our final ceremonial item.
I'm glad to be joined here today by my wife, Corina Herrera Loera.
Vice Mayor Kamay and I will be pleased to recognize the San Jose Police Department's homicide and crime scene unit. Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mayor Mahan. I'm going to wait till they all come down. This is really incredible.
It's important for us to be able to demonstrate a little bit of our culture.
This commendation is presented to the dedicated individuals of the San Jose Police Department's
You know, for hundreds of years, our First Nations people, from Chile to Alaska, have suffered at the hands of colonialism and conquest. And it wasn't until 1978, American Indian Freedom of Religion Act of 1978 that protected
homicide and crime scene unit for their tremendous accomplishment.
our right to be able to demonstrate and practice our indigenous ways in public spaces.
In 2022, their unwavering commitment to justice and their exceptional investigative skills
And so on behalf of all of those that didn't have that voice and were persecuted because of demonstrating their culture, we offer a song today in solidarity and on behalf of
led to the successful resolution of all 35 homicide cases in our city.
our future generations. Omateo, thank you for your attention.
These remarkable men and women have shown unparalleled dedication, working tirelessly to bring closure to the families of victims and to ensure the safety of our community. On behalf of the city, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude for their outstanding service and for making our community a safer place. May this commendation serve as a token of appreciation and our gratitude and a reminder that your commitment to justice is a source of inspiration for all of us. Thank you so much for your service. And now I'm going to have Lieutenant Ali Mira say a few words.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be up here representing a crime scene unit and homicide unit. I just wanted to take a second to explain what this award actually represents. For the men and women on this stage, it represents countless hours of dedication, time away from their family in the investigations, bringing justice to the families. What's not seen on this stage is this reward also represents the men and women of our patrol division that go out to these calls, secure the scenes for us, find witnesses, arrest suspects, our sergeants and lieutenants in the patrol division who secure the scenes and make the resources available for us, the men and women of our special operations unit that assist with the search warrants and apprehension of these suspects, other members of our bureau who assist in these investigations, the Santa Clara County DA's office that works hand-in-hand with us. This award is truly reflection of the men and women of the San Jose Police Department and their dedication to community and safety. Thank you.
All right, and on to our final ceremonial item. Vice Mayor Kamay and I will be pleased to recognize the San Jose Police Department's homicide and crime scene unit. Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mayor Mahan. I'm going to wait till they all come down. This commendation is presented to the dedicated individuals of the San Jose Police Department's homicide and crime scene unit for their tremendous accomplishment. In 2022, their unwavering commitment to justice and their exceptional investigative skills led to the successful resolution of all 35 homicide cases in our city. These remarkable men and women have shown unparalleled dedication, working tirelessly to bring closure to the families of victims and to ensure the safety of our community. On behalf of the city, I want to express our heartfelt gratitude for their outstanding service and for making our community a safer place. May this commendation serve as a token of appreciation and our gratitude and a reminder that your commitment to justice is a source of inspiration for all of us. Thank you so much for your service. And now I'm going to have Lieutenant Ali Mira say a few words.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be up here representing a crime scene unit and homicide unit. I just wanted to take a second to explain what this award actually represents. For the men and women on this stage, it represents countless hours of dedication, time away from their family in the investigations, bringing justice to the families. What's not seen on this stage is this reward also represents the men and women of our patrol division that go out to these calls, secure the scenes for us, find witnesses, arrest suspects, our sergeants and lieutenants in the patrol division who secure the scenes and make the resources available for us, the men and women of our special operations unit that assist with the search warrants and apprehension of these suspects, other members of our bureau who assist in these investigations, the Santa Clara County DA's office that works hand-in-hand with us. This award is truly reflection of the men and women of the San Jose Police Department and their dedication to community and safety. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to add item 3.9, the city's Association of Santa Clara County's Board -- Santa Clara County's Proposed Joint Powers Agreement to establish City's Association of Santa Clara County Joint Powers Agency, for the city of San Jose to join that, adding that to the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, great. So if I -- thank you. Any other proposed changes or comments? Okay. Tony, do we vote separately on -- I guess we go to public comment first and then vote on that change. Is that correct?
Yes, there are no hands.
No hands?
No hands.
Okay. I don't see any hands up on the dais here, so I suppose we're ready to vote. So item 3.9 has been added to the consent calendar. Okay, now we are on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items that council would like to pull from the consent calendar today? Okay, I'm not aware of any. We will -- do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Move approval of --
Second.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, back to the council. Not seen any hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is land use consent. We have one item, 10.1A. Do we have comments or a motion? I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Cohen. Any public comment?
There are no hands.
Okay, back to the council. I don't see any hands. Actually, Councilmember Foley, are you? No, your hand isn't up, is it? I'm sorry. Okay, I just saw your name on my screen. No, no problem. Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, item 3.1, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. We are now on to item 3.3, appeals hearing board interview. And Tony, I'll turn to you to conduct the interview.
Yes, I have -- David Hook and Willie Adams are unable to attend this interview, but they did submit letters. Those letters are posted as letters from the candidates on your agenda. We did not hear back from William Hale, but we do have John Buddhist, Timothy Kenny, and Brad Mosby here. So if I could have John, Timothy, and Brad to come down and sit where Yasmin is walking over there and putting your nameplates. And then this is your opportunity to interview them. When at the end of the interview, you can appoint up to three people, and you can appoint from the people who are not here. You can also defer any appointments to enable those people who are unable to attend today to come and interview.
Thank you, Tony.
Okay, so it does look like one of -- Brad did not attend. Is he the one that was in traffic? I think Brad was stuck in traffic, was the last we heard, but you can proceed.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Welcome, John and Timothy. Appreciate you being here in person. And Tony, just to confirm, I know you just said it, but it's three of the six folks who are on our list who we will be appointing?
Yes, there are three vacancies.
Great, and we have two applicants here in person. Does the council have any questions for the applicants? Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I have a question for Tony.
Sure.
I think there was a gentleman in one of the applicants, Willie Adams, I believe. In reading his application, it seemed like he had some sort of disability, and I was curious if that has any -- because he's not here, obviously.
He is not here. He did submit a letter.
Okay. Is the reason he's not here related to his disability?
My understanding was no.
Okay, okay.
But I was out due to sickness.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, is a motion in order or no? Do you want to go through?
If -- I appreciate that. I would just love to hear if folks have questions, since we do have two applicants who took the time to join us and are ready to answer questions. So if we could just take a minute to see if any of our colleagues -- I see Councilmember Torres had his hand up, so if it's okay with you, Councilmember, I'll go to Councilmember Torres first. Go ahead, Councilmember.
I apologize, Tony. William Hale did not respond to coming in person?
Correct. Yes, he has not responded to -- when we informed all of the candidates about today's interview, he's the only one we were unable to get a response from.
Okay. Was that it, Councilmember Torres? Okay. Councilwoman Foley, did you want to offer a motion?
Yes, I would. I would like to move the appointments of David Hook, Timothy Kenny, and John Buddhist.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Do we have public comment?
Have no hands.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously to appoint David, John, and Timothy.
Okay, made that fairly easy on you both. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming in person. Your applications speak for themselves.
If the two of you could come sit behind me, I'll talk to you in just a second.
Okay, thank you both. I think Tony would like to chat with you if you'd just sit over there. We are on to item 3.4, which is the civil service commission interview.
Yes, I have Joan Smith and Samuel Swift should be here.
And we had a third named, Tony, who I assume is not present?
He canceled at the -- I'm sorry, because I'm trying to do too many things at once.
I understand, yeah.
Can you -- wait, hold on. Can you --
No problem.
-- do his parking? Because it's -- and if the two of you -- give him just a second. Yasmin, take his as well. Okay, sorry. So 3.4, we have Joan Smith and Samuel Swift, who can go ahead and take a seat. And then the third person, Roy, he called us around between 1:00 and 1:30 to say he couldn't make it, but he did submit a letter. So I was not anticipating that he wouldn't be here.
Okay, and we were appointing two seats today?
Yes, you're pointing two, and the incumbents are the ones who we're interviewing right now. And then --
I see.
The third person was not an incumbent, but he did submit a letter, and he canceled at the last minute and said he couldn't make it.
Okay, well, Joan and Samuel, thank you for being here in person. We appreciate it, and thank you for seeking reappointment. I'll turn to my colleagues first to see if there are any questions or a motion. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, just a question for Tony. I know that the mix of this particular commission requires no more than four members shall be of the same sex and at least one member shall be turning up law. And assuming both Mr. Swift and Ms. Smith get appointed, that mix is going to be okay?
Right, because they're already on the board.
Okay, sorry, I missed that part. I had down that Ms. Smith is on the board, not that Mr. Swift is. Okay, all right, I'll move approval.
Of?
Of appointing Joan Smith and Samuel Swift, the two applicants to the civil service commission.
Second.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. Let's go to public comment.
I have no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you both for your service and congratulations.
Thanks for the interview.
Glad we could make that easy on everyone. Okay, we are on to item 3.5, which is the amendment to the vendor agreement with Delta Dental. There's no staff presentation, but we do have staff available if there are questions. Looking to my colleagues.
Move approval, second.
Okay, motion from Councilmember Davis, second from Councilmember Foley. Don't see any other hands. Do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
Great, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Caudy Creek project from Phelan Avenue to Tully Road. No staff presentation, staff's available if we have questions. Colleagues? Councilmember Duane, would you like to make a motion? Oh!
Absolutely. I move to accept.
Okay, thank you. Are there -- okay, I still have mics on, but no other questions, I assume. Okay, great. Public -- do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I'll just say, just because we're zipping through this, I wanted to slow us down a little bit, just to say that I've been in this hangar, and it's a very old facility, so it's wonderful that they're getting a new hangar. And for any councilmember that hasn't had a chance to get on the helicopter and experience what they do day in, day out, it's an amazing experience, and so I would encourage you to reach out to the Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was that a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, great. Tony, did you get the second?
No.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor. Okay, do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.6, amendment to the vendor agreements with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Kaiser Foundation Health Plan. Once again, no staff presentation. Do we have comment or motion? Councilmember Cohen?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Great, thank you. No other hands. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're on to item 3.7, report on bids and award of contract for the Caudy Creek project from Phelan Avenue to Tully Road. No staff presentation, staff's available if we have questions. Colleagues? Councilmember Duane, would you like to make a motion? Oh!
Absolutely. I move to accept.
Okay, thank you. Are there -- okay, I still have mics on, but no other questions, I assume. Okay, great. Public -- do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I'll just say, just because we're zipping through this, I wanted to slow us down a little bit, just to say that I've been in this hangar, and it's a very old facility, so it's wonderful that they're getting a new hangar. And for any councilmember that hasn't had a chance to get on the helicopter and experience what they do day in, day out, it's an amazing experience, and so I would encourage you to reach out to the Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was that a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, great. Tony, did you get the second?
No. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor. Okay, do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I'll just say, just because we're zipping through this, I wanted to slow us down a little bit, just to say that I've been in this hangar, and it's a very old facility, so it's wonderful that they're getting a new hangar. And for any councilmember that hasn't had a chance to get on the helicopter and experience what they do day in, day out, it's an amazing experience, and so I would encourage you to reach out to the Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was that a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, great. Tony, did you get the second?
No. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor. Okay, do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I'll just say, just because we're zipping through this, I wanted to slow us down a little bit, just to say that I've been in this hangar, and it's a very old facility, so it's wonderful that they're getting a new hangar. And for any councilmember that hasn't had a chance to get on the helicopter and experience what they do day in, day out, it's an amazing experience, and so I would encourage you to reach out to the Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was that a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, great. Tony, did you get the second?
No.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor. Okay, do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I'll just say, just because we're zipping through this, I wanted to slow us down a little bit, just to say that I've been in this hangar, and it's a very old facility, so it's wonderful that they're getting a new hangar. And for any councilmember that hasn't had a chance to get on the helicopter and experience what they do day in, day out, it's an amazing experience, and so I would encourage you to reach out to the Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was that a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, great. Tony, did you get the second?
No.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor. Okay, do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I'll just say, just because we're zipping through this, I wanted to slow us down a little bit, just to say that I've been in this hangar, and it's a very old facility, so it's wonderful that they're getting a new hangar. And for any councilmember that hasn't had a chance to get on the helicopter and experience what they do day in, day out, it's an amazing experience, and so I would encourage you to reach out to the Police Department.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was that a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, great. Tony, did you get the second?
No.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor. Okay, do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Glad we could make that easy on everyone. Okay, we are on to item 3.5, which is the amendment to the vendor agreement with Delta Dental. There's no staff presentation, but we do have staff available if there are questions. Looking to my colleagues.
Move approval, second.
Okay, motion from Councilmember Davis, second from Councilmember Foley. Don't see any other hands? Do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
Great, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We're on to item 3.6, amendment to the vendor agreements with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Kaiser Foundation Health Plan. Once again, no staff presentation. Do we have comment or motion? Councilmember Cohen?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Great, thank you. No other hands? Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, let's vote. Great, thank you. We're on to item 3.7, report on bids and award of contract for the County Creek project from Phelan Avenue to Tully Road. No staff presentation. Staff's available if we have questions. Councilmember Duane, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely. I move to accept.
Okay, thank you. Are there, okay, I still have mics on, but no other questions, I assume. Okay, great. Public, do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 3.8, report on bids and award of contract for the Police Department Air Support Unit hangar relocation. This is a Measure T project. Turn to my colleagues. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I'll just say, just because we're zipping through this, I wanted to slow us down, slow us down a little bit, just to say that I've been in this hangar and it's a very old facility, so it's wonderful that they're getting a new hangar. And for any councilmember that hasn't had a chance to get on the helicopter and experience what they do day in, day out, it's an amazing experience, and so I would encourage you to reach out to the police department.
Thank you, councilmember. Was that a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, great. Tony, did you get the second?
No.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Vice Mayor. Okay, do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
All right, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, for those keeping track, item 3.9 was approved with a consent calendar. We are on to item 5.1, multiple master consultant agreements for transportation-related services. Once again, no staff presentation, but staff is available. Any questions or a motion?
Motion for approval. Sorry, I moved to approval.
Great, second from Vice Mayor Kamai. No other hands? Do we have any public comment?
There are no hands.
Okay, let's vote. Thank you. Well done, everyone. We're on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do we have any comment?
Yes.
Okay.
I have Josh.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, my name is Josh Sello, CEO of Bill Wilson Center. We're a local nonprofit working to end youth and family homelessness. I'm here today in honor of Runaway and Homeless Youth Prevention Month, a nationwide campaign each November to increase awareness about homelessness among youth and young adults and to spotlight the resources available for youth in crisis. Santa Clara County has the third highest population of homeless individuals in the nation, 12% of whom are under 24 years. San Jose alone has the highest per capita youth and young adult homelessness in the U.S. As you all know, the longer a person is homeless, the longer it takes and the costlier it is to help them transition into permanent housing. Lacking adequate employment and skills for independent living increases the likelihood that homeless youth will become chronically homeless adults. Bill Wilson Center has been serving homeless youth, young adults, and young parent families in Santa Clara County for 50 years. The clients we serve typically range from children as young as 12 years who run away from home, to older youth and young adults between the ages of 18 and 24, some of whom may even have children. We not only offer immediate shelter, but other supportive services as well, healthcare, mental health support, job training, financial literacy, substance abuse treatment, parenting and life school classes, and much more. For more about Bill Wilson Center, please visit our website at www.billwilsoncenter.org. And if you know a young person who's experiencing homelessness, please refer them to us. They can contact us at 385-2400. Finally, I hope you'll join us this Friday outside your doors at our annual Green Light Walk, a rally to end youth homelessness. We kick off at San Jose City Hall at 5:30 p.m. this Friday, November 10th, then take a short, one-mile walk to our drop-in center in downtown San Jose. All are welcome. Working together, we can end youth homelessness. Thank you.
Back to the council?
Thank you, we're adjourned. Have a great afternoon.